The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and our invisible liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi.
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Valado?
Here.
Does anyone know why we do that when people are sitting there and you ask them?
Official.
Where did that all come from or whatever?
It's official, we here.
Well, welcome everyone to the monthly meeting. First off, I have to congratulate our two trustees for their hard fought victory in the local elections. And trustee Miller, thank you guys for running and I'm glad you're with us for another year.
Thank you very much.
Well, at least I'm here for being there. Anyway, I'm glad you guys ran. I appreciate it and I appreciate you guys, what you've done and still staying on the day. So, thank you. Let's see, police report.
Good evening, everybody. We had, for the month of October, we need one second. I didn't tally up the calls. Alright, looks like I did not tally up the calls. I think we had about, I want to look here, about eighty-four calls if I'm not mistaken. We're getting a lot of automatic alarm calls. We had a lot come in on up at the medical center there. Basically, the alarms going off for the wind or a lot of times in the midnight so we'll actually check the doors up at the medical center and that'll trigger the alarm. I spoke to Mr. McComb on that and he said he's having issues with the alarm company and also the cleaners that go in, they set the alarm off constantly. So that's what takes us a lot of our time. We had actually twelve false alarms, not just twelve up there, there were other ones around the village. When power goes on and off, if you have a burglar alarm, it automatically trips. So, I know we had a little bit of issues with that. Those are, it seems to be one of the biggest calls we actually get and that's been an ongoing thing for a while.
What medical center are you part of?
The Butterfield.
Oh, okay.
The doctor's office, the medical offices.
That's what I figured. Maybe I missed something.
No, no, no problem. Those are the ones we get the most kind of calls on with that. Sorry. For the, we had one arrest. It was actually a desk appearance ticket. The individual was seventeen-year-old. He was down in Foundry Park in his vehicle smelling marijuana and the officer that responded, when he did the investigation, discovered a small bag of marijuana in the vehicle. So, he was given a desk appearance ticket to appear before court and he was released to his parents. That was the only arrest. Summons we had, twenty-four moving violations, which are various speeding, disobeyed traffic control devices and some uninspected vehicles. We had ninety-seven parking summonses for a total of a hundred and twenty-one movers and parkers. Nico's last weekend, the summons officer was this past weekend, unless we want to bring him back, but I think he's pretty much done for the season. He was a smashing success on, I will get you that. I don't have the tallies with me today, but he was averaging anywhere between, I want to say the days he worked, between eight and twelve summonses for one day's work. So, if he worked Saturday and Sunday, he had that up for probably, I think he worked about eight or nine days or ten days. He did very well. And he was all over the village. He wasn't just on Main Street, he was all over the place.
Can we, can we enter our next monthly meeting?
Sorry?
Can you ask him if he'll attend our next monthly meeting?
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank him.
Absolutely, I'll have him come in.
It'll be the Christmas season anyway, so.
Yep.
It'll be, I think he was great and I saw him all over, as you said.
Yeah, he was all over the place. We had the Halloween parade, which went by with no issues, no problems from what the officers told me. I was not at the Halloween parade. It was one of the few times I didn't make it in. The trick or treat up at Parrot Street went again smashingly, there was no incidents. Actually, it was a lot less issues with shaving cream and eggs and stuff like that. The kids had school the next day, so that kind of helped out. Last year they didn't and we had a rash of shaving cream incidents. But this year went by, no problems. We had, on November 2nd, we had a, we had a bunch of people, probably between four and five individuals that we have the investigation on, went through the village and they went into every, wherever his car was open, they went into cars. Chestnut, Parrot, Parsonage, Maple Terrace and all the north part of the village.
Thanks for your two.
Yeah, that's your two.
Yeah.
Bank, West Bank, all the northern part. We have some surveillance on them, so I counted, there's about five of them. They had hoods on, we're trying to get better video evidence on them. It's very, very hard because they had the hoods up. It was, you know, they hit between, I think it was between one-thirty and three o'clock. And in the video, every time they tripped a video, we got video from a couple of different businesses and Chestnut Ridge, Department County Sheriff and our midnight guy were right behind them within about a minute. So, every time they went up a block, I looked at another video, another like minute later, they had hit it. So, they started down like Chestnut, worked their way all the way up. My idea is they parked somewhere up in Nelsonville and they hit it real quick and jumped in. They took change, they took sunglasses, they didn't take anything major. Break-ins are break-ins, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. But it was just the doors that were open. You watched them, they went in and they fanned out, especially in Chestnut Ridge. They checked all the doors. Whenever a door was locked, they just kept going. So, we do have some surveillance on it. I'm working with the sheriff's department on it to see if we can ID them at this point.
Was it just one night that they did that or?
One night in the village of Cold Spring, from what I think and what the investigative sheriff's department is. Lake Peekskill got hit two nights before Halloween and I think Continental Village also got hit. We notified the state police, they all cited an incident in lower, upper Westchester. But we're not sure if it's the same group of people. That's something we're looking at, but we definitely know that. I just want to tell everybody, it's time to really lock, lock your doors, lock everything, cars, anything. Because like I said, they didn't actually break into anything. If it was open, they took the initiative to get in, go in there. That happened on November 2nd. What else do we have here? We had the Kenley vigil that went extremely well the other night up at State Mary's. There was a lot of people there, a couple, I know the mayor was there and a few of the people were up there. It went by with no incidents whatsoever. Got a lot of good feedback from the community that we had officers there. We had my, Carl was up there, Volmer, and Terry Kamisky was up there and I had shown up for the Kenley vigil. So, that went, that went pretty well. Again, great feedback from the community that we were visible and we were there. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay. Recreation Commission. Yes.
Do you want me to say something about it?
Sure, if you just want to highlight, we have this.
Just, thank you. We brought to my attention an event we thought already happened, hasn't happened yet. We obviously got a request or something for 2019 for a can and wedding at the bandstand. And I checked today and she's right, it's 2019, not 2018, which we, that was all done. The work at the dockside, one side is all done. We got the final bill today and Fran has it, so we can wrap up that insurance claim. I think that's the last thing, isn't it, Fran?
Yeah, I believe so.
Skate park, they did go last week and do some preliminary digging. And we're very surprised to find that, I talked to Michelle Hartford, just briefly passing in the hallways, accounting that the closer to the river, the less water in the pits. Moving towards the pavilion, there was more water in the pit. So, they were kind of surprised about that. So, they continued to look and see what that means. They haven't gotten the full report yet, but they're still working at that. Ethan Gunther's picnic table is all done and at the Top Park. It looks very nice. If you've looked on Facebook, you'll see pictures of it. It's pretty sturdy, I think. A lot of positive feedback from people who offered the Top Park, how nice it was, how professional it looked. So, I think we recommend that a thank you note from the village might be appropriate to him to acknowledge his work. We did intend, the commission did intend this weekend that we were going to start decorating the bandstand. We wanted to do it a little bit earlier before it got really cold. We don't have any roping of trees yet from Barry's. They won't be in until after our planned date. So, I'm thinking that we might just put up the lights this weekend and then do the roping, which does not include ladders and things later on. So, hopefully, but we have all new lights to put up. Dave Morandi and Steve Etta, we purchased the lights and they worked and put the plugs on them. So, we'll have new lights and it'll be much less hassle putting them up. I think that's about it, unless anybody has any questions. I know that you, you're working on, you know, the makeup of the commission.
Yeah, we can talk about that tonight.
Yeah, okay. Any questions?
Yeah. The turkey trot to go? The turkey trot is a go?
Yes, the turkey trot is a go.
And that's good with you?
Yep, we have, we have that on the board.
I think it's getting bigger and bigger, isn't it?
Yep, we have yours and ours, so I should be on it.
Okay, good.
And I will put it out penciling at another event after next week's recreation commission meeting. They want penciled in for the.
Sounds good.
For the festival, yeah. So, probably fact in the next report.
Planning Board, we do not have anything. Jeff and I talked today. We're getting a little lax with our reports, so we're going to send out a little more assertive note to everyone. I know they had a meeting, but we don't have anything. Zoning Board of Appeals, we have our report here. New Business EBA will interview Grace Low for the open board position on November 13th. Current Business None, Old Business Public Hearing Notice Signs, the EBA proposal has been revised and made to the Village Board of Trustees. We look forward to progress on this request. One ninety-one Main Street inactive application for a new shed at the end of driveway and properties Chestnut Street inside requiring setback variances. Town of Phillips Town, no one here. Stork District Review, I think Kathleen was going to be here. I have a report from her, but I think they're doing the absentee ballots for the Sue Serino, Karen Smythe election tonight, which is going to be down to the wire. So, she is not here, she's there. Please accept the following report from the HDRB for November 2018. I'll try to attend the Village Board this evening, but if I cannot, would you kindly read this report to the record? First, a hearty thank you to trustees, especially Mayor Morandi, for your efforts to spruce up the professionalized Village Hall. It's a much more pleasant and welcoming work environment for us and for applicants. A note on Main Street Windows, the windows that were installed when the facade of the Village Hall was updated, were not compliant with the district's design standards. They were installed a long time ago and without consultation with the HDRB. Snap-in muttons are now allowable in the national area of this storied district. We hope you might consider leaving muttons out now that they have been removed as they set up for, we hope you might consider leaving the muttons out now, that they have been removed as they set up, for example, in the heart of the district. It can be difficult for applicants to understand why they are told they cannot install snap-ins when they see them on Village Hall itself. Thank you very much. So, she's actually requesting we leave them out?
Yep.
Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay.
The first line you read.
Kind of surprised with that. Anyway, aren't they going to ask why they have that muttons at all if we don't have them on the Village Hall? On this month's agenda, we are continuing discussion of a fence and gate installation on 2935 Market Street. A new sign is proposed for the M&amp;T Bank on Chestnut Street. We have several projects in the workshop stage. Two Main Street Hudson House is planning exterior modifications that will accommodate an ADA accessible bathroom. It will be visible from Main Street's side of the building. One twenty-four Main Street Silver Spoon is proposing exterior alterations to convert the first floor of the business into additional overnight accommodations. This project is also before the planning board and will require coordinated review under Secur. The long empty barn near northwest corner of Parsonage and Pine Street, 21 Parsonage, may soon see new life as a habitable structure. This conversation will also require coordinated review under Secur with both the planning board and zoning board. It's not often that the district sees a chance to bring a vacant ancillary structure back into the life of the streetscape. So, we're eager to see the project unfold. Fire Company?
No report given.
No report. Tree Advisory, nothing? I just report on that, I was going to report on it later, but since I thought that Jen would be here, that she did secure the, a grant for, I'm not sure, do you remember who it was from?
No, I don't.
Well, the grant's for like fifty thousand?
Just under that.
Just forty-nine, something.
Forty-nine and change, yeah.
Forty-nine thousand plus for the trees. So, she missed out last year, but she got in a little late. She got in this year and secured it. So, thank you very much to Jen and to the tree board for that.
And that will go toward?
Tree maintenance. And I think a little bit of it, she said, might go to the tree beds, or something, but the majority of it goes to?
It's the DEC Urban Community Forestry.
The DEC Urban and Community Forestry Grant is the one that she had won out. If the papers would like that, we can get the numbers to you tomorrow. I think it's great. It's, it took a lot of effort. Oh, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents.
They gave a lot of work on that, yeah.
And I think the trees, we did have them scheduled, like there's a whole first round, there's a pruning that was going to be done and Jen didn't get cones out for whatever reason. So, that's scheduled for the week after Thanksgiving, will be the first round. There's a number of trees that are dead as you probably noticed and a lot of limbs that need to be cut back. So, thank you Jen on that and for the work from their board, the tree board. Code update.
In the month of October, the code update committee conducted two meetings. At those meetings, the committee refined the steep slope standards document based on review and feedback from Badian Watson, which was done complimentary. Thank you very much to Badian Watson. The committee further considered and made recommendations and made recommended changes to the flooding status document and began additional development on the phase four topics of evaluate permitting of conservation of facade easements, evaluate permitting of outright demolition of existing structures, evaluate permitting of conservation subdivisions and, sorry, amend subdivision requirements and evaluating adopting a waterfront consistency review law. There was no monthly conference call in NYSRDA in the month of October due to scheduling conflicts. NYSRDA has recommended approval of checkpoints 1.2L and 1.2M, which represent the 12th and 13th quarterly contract management and progress reports covering the periods April 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018, and July 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2018 respectively, along with the associated minutes for the meetings held during those two periods. However, NYSRDA did not approve checkpoint 3.3, meeting minutes and attendance list from public input session number three. The committee had submitted to NYSRDA the video of the public meeting number three, the sign-in sheets, the PowerPoint presentation given at that meeting, the Word document containing all recommended village code changes and a Word document containing all the questions raised at the meeting and the answers provided to those questions. This was not acceptable to NYSRDA, so a new document will be provided in meeting minute format summarizing public meeting three.
So, they didn't accept it because of the format or what?
It wasn't in meeting minute format.
Jesus, okay.
Didn't you submit it the same way you always do?
I'm sorry?
Didn't you submit it the same way you've done for the others?
I did.
Someone you know on the other end.
Thank you for working that. Greg, Water, Waste Water?
All right, good evening. I'll start with the Water Department. Mayor Morandi, Bart Clark and I met with the owners of the property abutting in the west end of the Upper Reservoir Dam recently. There was an informal discussion of alternative access routes and the need for an easement to accommodate the rehabilitation of the dam in the coming years. Meetings with other owners will occur in the near future. We finalize an ad to be run for my replacement in the coming year. It will appear in trade publications as well as local and regional newspapers. And we're, you approved the abbreviated one to go in print and then we would have the more thorough, larger one available through the, whether it be the website or, I didn't really get. Not that was going to be tied in yet.
There's a link to it, I'm not sure how just going to do it.
Okay, because that was the only thing stopping, because I know that I saw in correspondence from them talking about AWWA. That is another place where we're planning on getting something in there, so to have that link.
I was looking for some other places to work, so.
And in the past week, we had Ross Vowles, technicians in the village to rebuild two pressure regulating valves in our distribution system. One is on Northern Avenue over near the Tops Park and the other is on Main Street. Both tasks were completed in the same visit, which will make it easier and slightly less expensive to schedule in the future. In the past, we've had technicians that have only gotten one done in a day. And so, you're paying for travel and expenses as well as the work they do. You know, we got two youngish guys that were, you know, jumping in and out of the hole and getting, you know, got everything done in one day. So, that really worked out. Saved us a little bit of time and money. And it puts them both on the same, it's easier to get them done in the same period because they're performing the same function and helping to control the pressures that would be excessive as you get down near the river when things are wide open. So, we did notice some issues during the hydrant flush, so that pointed toward those valves and we got them rebuilt. And so, now we're good for the next four or five years. Anything on the water side? Okay. Waste Water, well as normal, as it can be. Last week, I submitted a recommendation to the board that Lou Kitzviger, hired in May, be switched to permanent employee status at the end of his six-month probation. With a switch to full-time permanent status, one of the conditions is alternating weekend coverages with Scott. Lou is on board with that requirement. And then I just wanted to mention that for the better part of the last ten years, Charlie Norton, then with the Highway Department, had been assisting us on alternate weekends. Even upon leaving the village employment, Charlie agreed to stay and help out, knowing that at some point we'd make other arrangements. And I'd just like to take a moment to thank Charlie for his dedication to the village, past and present, along with best wishes for the future. I'll make sure to say that.
Great. Greg and I also met with the contractors doing the sewer lines for the old Campbell Estate, which is a lengthy, a long section of line which goes, connects into our sewer system. So, I'd like to thank Greg for following up and making sure everything was working on that one because there were some issues on it. So, I think we ironed out most today. Most of it's, the responsibility is on the owner. We just want to make sure that he doesn't come back and invite us. So, today we kind of straightened most of it out. Whether they accept it or not, I don't know. But thank you Greg for your time on that.
To that end, if you don't mind, Dave, we discussed, basically the outlet of the driveway is almost across the boulevard from Forge Gate. It's about, you know, in that general area. The manhole that they're looking to go to discharge the, their little pump station is all the way at the intersection of the boulevard at Constitution. And so, it's about a hundred and twenty feet that on the drawings shows a road cut of a hundred and twenty feet, which is pretty sizable. And so, we talked about the potential, there's a twenty-five foot right away from the edge of pavement toward the Leonard property, the first one on Constitution, that's pretty much a grassy area. There are a few trees there, so I'd want to get some input probably from Jen and the Tree Advisory Board as to if we could, you know, put the majority of the trench off-road, so we don't have that potential for, you know, just uneven settling and, you know, just nasty pavement. I'd like to, if it's possible.
It's not great there anyway.
I'm sorry?
The pavement's not great right there anyway.
Yeah, I just figure, you know, if there's a way to keep it off the road for the majority of it and then just come into the manhole as it gets out toward the corner of Constitution, it might be, that's something that, you know, you guys would have to. I figure we meet down there with Bob from Highway, to see if, you know, if everybody's on board with that, we could direct them in that area.
Was there a sewer line there before? Was there a sewer line to the property before?
No, it was septic. And there's plenty of room on the property. I'm not exactly sure why they, they went through it, they did, but that's the way they planned it.
The funny part of the meeting was that Greg pointed out that, he said it was fifteen feet and Greg said, no, it's a hundred and twenty feet. He shows them and he goes, and then he goes, no, it's a hundred and ten feet. So, he knew what you were talking about. It was like, just wanted to get around it for some reason.
Yeah, you know, the potential is, and I meant to mention this to both yous, you know, to look into, you have road opening permits and it's like fifty dollars. And, you know, there probably should be some way to look at it relative to the size of the road opening as to what fees and or kind of, you know, deposits. We, you know, we hold people to it for a year, but, you know, to maintain the integrity of the patches that they make, it just might be something to visit and what those fees are. Because if you're making a five-foot cut into the road, you know, five feet long or a hundred and twenty feet, it's, you know, it just seems to be a little bit, a little bit different.
So, are we now, the hundred and fifty feet, would they wouldn't be responsible for the patching? Would it be fifty dollars or not?
Well, what you pay for a street opening permit, I don't know the exact amount. It's fifty or seventy-five dollars. But it's, it's the same for whatever size opening you're making. And so, I'm just saying that it's something that you may want to consider, you know, looking at for, depending on how much area is being disturbed. And, you know, again, we do monitor that for a year and if there's pavement issues with settlement, they have to come back and bring it back to. But it just seems like, you know, it's something that you may want to.
Is it just for one year, Greg?
That's all, yeah, and that's all we've ever looked at, I guess.
Do you want to plug it in the code?
What's that?
Can we find that in the code?
Yeah, if you would, thank you. A little follow-up on that, thank you Greg. Building Department, let's see. New building permit applications, fourteen. Building permits issued, eleven. Dumpster permits, two. COs issued, four. Title searches completed, six. Complaints received, one. HDRB referrals, three. None for ZBA or planning. Fees, applications and permit fees collected, five thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars fifty-five cents. Title search fees collected, four hundred and fifty. Other fees, ninety, for a total for October of six thousand and three dollars and fifty-five cents. A busy month, I think it seems.
Who is this?
What's that?
The build out of the town space? Just curious, just having to see if that's it.
Report Justice Court, fines forfeited, bales and civil penalties, four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Parking tickets, three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Civil fees, seven hundred and twenty-five. Mandatory state surcharges, twenty-five hundred and forty-six dollars. Total, eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. Report Mayor and Board of Trustees, anything Lynn?
I didn't hear anything this week, thank you.
Marie?
No.
Fran? Steve?
The CCA is going to be putting on public information meetings or whatever. They're going to be held at Village Hall here. It'll be on the website, The Times, but they want to answer any questions people have about joining the CCA.
So, are we going to coordinate or how is that going to go? Are they responsible for advertising?
Well, they hired the guy to run that for them, the guy who's going to reach out to us, so.
So, he's asked, is he going to coordinate with us? When are they planning on?
Well, he'll be coordinating with Jeff, but it'll be, they'll be announcing it in the paper and then we'll put it on the website as it. It's already on the website, actually.
When is this happening?
I'm not sure the dates. It's, it's happened.
This month, next month?
Yes, it'll be one in November.
Next year?
This, this year, for sure.
There's nothing scheduled for here. They're all scheduled for Beacon Garret.
Okay, so the new ones haven't gone on the site yet.
Now, we declined to participate originally, correct?
No.
No. We agreed to participate?
Yes.
I thought we declined because it was almost all promissory. It, I mean, there was nothing concrete.
Participate meaning?
Become a CCA. Become a CCA.
No, I think we're moving.
Yeah, we're doing it, yes. We, we agreed to do it, yes.
Agreed to move forward with the group with Fishkill and.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of something else.
I think it might be, yeah.
Because you're thinking of the name we had with Green Mountain Energy?
No, no, it has nothing to do with energy. No. Okay.
This is only Jewel.
Community choice irrigation stuff.
No, no, it wasn't.
Yeah.
What I was thinking, I, I asked if we could revisit that topic. The, and I sort of looks very favorably on whatever it is I was thinking of, which obviously is not CCA.
It is the CCA, they do look with great favor on, on that.
No, no, it wasn't CCA.
Something else.
Pops into your head, Lynn.
I know the CCA has scheduled a whole bunch of things that are on the, the village website, but not been here yet. They're scheduled up to the middle of December in Garrison and Beacon and so on. They're all posted on the village website, so if they're gonna be here, they're gonna be.
Well, he has to confirm the dates with, with Jeff, so that's what they're working on right now. I don't think, according to the email I looked at, really good. They haven't talked yet, but, but he had some proposed dates on there, so he has to clear them with Jeff. But one of them, they're in November and December, what I saw. But we don't know what they are yet, but they will be posted when we do. And then the company that's putting this on, they are gonna pay local parents and stuff like that also. That's not our responsibility, that's part of their contract.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank Grace Kennedy and Deb McLeod, and I hope I have her last name. Deb's hair design, is it McLeod? Is anyone, is that her or another thing? Anyway, they both, Grace, who I'm friends with and who's a landscape, landscaper, called me and said that her and Deb were interested in cleaning out the two tree beds at the gas station at the, at the traffic light and if it would be okay to do that. Of course, I said, yeah, that'd be great. And so I don't know if anyone's noticed, but they, they went up there, Bugsy, I, I think one of the guys went up there with the truck and they, you know, Grace and Deb, and I don't know if they had workers with them, cleaned all of the, the brush out of there and really made it, I think, look good cuz I remember what it was before and after. So anyway, it was quite a bit of work.
We also worked on a piece of property between the gas station and Armstrong's house.
Oh, really?
The little sliver of land that Judy Darcy owns.
Well, more thanks.
They really do.
So they did a lot of work. Grace is from, is from Garrison, so not even a village resident. And Deb, does Deb live in the village?
She lives in Constitution Island.
Oh, she does?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So she's not a villager.
That, that's Triple M belongs to the Hartford's.
Pardon me?
The Triple M between Armstrong and the gas station?
Belongs to Judy Darcy.
Uh, it's, the Hartford's bought it when they bought the, they have access right through there. The Hartford's have the architectural office there. James and Judy, I remember cuz I'd worked on the building and they owned, they wanted to think about putting a potential driveway there.
Yeah, which is all sand. It's, it's.
Yeah, it's an embankment, but.
So the Hartford's bought that?
That, that was part of the property of the building that is now their office. They're, that goes pretty far back and then it doglegs behind the gas station.
Right. Behind it, it comes out onto Mars?
Yep.
Okay, I, I thought she still owned it, okay.
So you did the Hartford's affair in it. I don't know if they know, even got cleaned up.
Last thanks, I wanted to give to, to Marie and, and Fran for, for working on the, the Main Street project. We just, as we were talking before, before the meeting, we just received more, our last reimbursement, although it's a little lit off for like a hundred thousand, but, you know, it's a lot of work and effort that went into that and a lot of follow-through and a lot of paperwork. And Michelle, also our accountant, working with, with the two trustees, really did a phenomenal job. I definitely wouldn't have got done in, I, I don't think with, with, with the work they, without having the work they did. So thank you, guys, for, for a lot of effort. Huge applause from the audience. And that's all I have for that. Correspondents, request to purchase a own property of one twenty-four Main Street, which is Jimmy Silver Spoon. I have a letter from his attorney. I have been asked to pass on to the village board that Jimmy Silver Spoon, no, that was his name. Would like to purchase the area of concrete slab, a step up from the sidewalk at the front of one twenty-four Main Street. Discussion on that.
Normal, normal price per square foot?
Yeah, no problem with it.
Well, he's been using it to.
And legal fees, correct?
Yeah. He's been using it this whole time, right, or for years?
Oh, yeah, so does everybody, guys.
I, I thought, I thought he had already ownership of it.
I think we had discussed it a while back and I never, I never followed through on it. So I have no problem with it.
So I'll make a motion to sell the property indicated in front of one twenty-four Main Street to Jimmy Silver Spoon, for the, I believe it's whatever the fee, the normal fee is, which is four dollars, is what, whatever the, whatever our fee is.
Was it six? I don't remember.
And legal fees.
And all legal fees.
I second that motion.
Seconded, I'm sorry?
Thank you, Fran.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, let's see. Request for credit to a water account. This is a property on Peak Skill Road, I believe, fifty-three Peak Skill Road. They went from two water connections to one, or, or meters to one. They're asking for reimbursement. Uh, Marie, are you familiar with this? I just went through quickly with, with, with Jeff. It sounds like they are correct. It has been, they do only have one now, so.
Yep.
Unless there's any other comments on that, I'll make a motion to, to send them a reimbursement check in the amount of.
We, we give them the credit when they want it.
Or a credit, a credit to their water bill.
So a comment on that. He's making the request in November and he's asking for reimbursement for fees that were paid in January and June. I, I understand, it seems to me it's appropriate to adjust his current water bill, but why did he not, sorry, I'm not sure that it's appropriate to go back and, and adjust January, February, March, April, May, June, July? When he's just making, what, make the request in a more timely basis?
I think from what Jeff said, his property has always been one family and they don't know why it was being billed as, as a two-family property. We did adjust, I guess, whatever back, you know, when he asked for it originally, we adjusted him to the one family, but.
That's what he's asking for now.
Now he's looking for the credit.
He's asking for a single, single water rate instead of two water rates.
And I don't think, from what Jeff had said to me last week, I believe it was, this property was never a two-family house. It was always a one-family and why it was ever at two water rates.
This isn't the Bouldnick property?
I don't, I don't know, I.
I don't know which one it is.
Which I, I thought was at one time a two-family.
Don't know which one it is.
Fifty-three Peak Skill.
And Frank's not here. But my point is that he's asking now for reimbursement for the entire year as opposed to asking for that earlier in the year.
I don't know the reason for that. I don't think we should, you know, it's two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents and.
But he's asking for a rebate though. We, we don't, do we do rebate?
We do a credit on his water bill.
So that's what he gets.
Yeah. It'll be a credit, yeah.
So I agree that he should have brought this up earlier. Maybe he just looked at his water bill first. I have no idea. It's, it's not a huge amount of money and, and it's actually, you know, why, why should we be charging him for two when it's only one, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, charging him for one now is appropriate. Where I have a problem is that this didn't come up sooner. So he just purchased the property.
He just purchased it?
Yeah. He purchased it recently.
So he didn't even pay January and June or did he pay the whole year?
He paid, he paid the entire year.
Okay, so he paid the entire year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Three, six months.
I have no problem. I'll make a motion to, to credit them two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Thank you. Discussion on water rents for Butterfield Building Number Two. I think this is in Marie's little house.
The village code identifies sewer and water rents in sections, in sections ninety-seven dash forty-seven for sewer rents and one thirty dash fifteen for water rents. The sewer rent is very straightforward. It's one rental unit for each, for each private lavatory. There are six private lavatories on the ground floor, so Butterfield will be assessed. This is my recommendation, that Butterfield be assessed. Six sewer rental units for the ground floor. The question comes up about water rents.
Do we have to do one, one at a time or is this just, well, that, you wanna go?
I'll, I'll just go through the whole thing.
Okay.
The, the, the code is very clear on, on sewer rents, it's six.
On the sewer?
Right, on sewer. Water rents, it's not quite so clear. The code states for single-family residents, two or more residential homes or apartments, multiple mixed-use buildings, and, and, but then it gets into special assessments. So for example, hospitals, nursing homes, schools, churches, light industry, heavy industry, cemetery, outdoor services are all special assessments. So Greg very kindly went through the buildout of the ground floor. In addition to the six private lavatories that are on the ground floor, there are eighteen sinks and one janitor's stall. This doesn't translate to a residence, oh, sorry. The six private lavatories would translate to, in my opinion, would translate to six water rentals. The additional eighteen sinks, I believe, would be my recommendation that the board consider that four sinks would be equivalent to one water rent. So my recommendation would be for the eighteen additional sinks, and I suspect what it is, is a sink in each of the examination rooms. So my recommendation would be one water rent for every four sinks. That would be four point five water units, water rents. And then there's the janitor's closet and my recommendation would be one water rent for the janitor's closet. So my recommendation and the special assessment according to the, according to the code, a special assessment is evaluated by the village board. So my recommendation is to, is to charge Butterfield Ground Floor for a total of eleven point five water rents as their special assessment. And that's based on six per private lavatories, four point five for sinks, the eighteen sinks, and one for the janitor's stall.
Do you wanna, we need a motion, do you wanna make a motion?
I made the motion that the water rental units for the ground floor of the Butterfield Building Number Two be set at eleven point five water rents.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
And the sewer, is that, is that straightforward?
That's six, it's very straightforward. We do not need to do that. It's, it's based upon private.
Now, is this something that is sent to the owner or is that just they receive a bill or do we, should we send an explanation?
I will, I will send a letter to, I can't remember the name of the woman that I've dealt with, identifying what we're going to be setting it at.
Okay. Thank you for your work on that and Greg. Okay, next we have approval, approve the completion of probationary period for Jake Bacaro, effective June ninth, two thousand and eighteen, for the recommendation of Robert Downey, the Highway Crew Chief. In a way, Jake was a bit of a godsend. He was the only one that had a CDL license when we hired him. He had experience, his dad's like, is, manages properties, so he, you know, he has had some background, although Young had some background and headed CDL and without that, we would only had one driver, which was Bugsy. And so anyway, Jake's worked out fairly well, I think, for us and by the, from the recommendation of Robert Downey. I, I agree to end the probation and to hire him full-time. I'll make a motion to, to hire Jake full-time and to end his probationary period.
I'll second that.
Effective June ninth, I mean, November ninth, sorry.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. There was a, in Greg's report, I apologize, I shouldn't have broken it before. There was a recommendation in Greg's report to complete the probationary period.
That's Lou. This is Jake.
Right, I understand, but we don't, we don't have on, on the list here.
We did Louis last week.
Okay.
But did not approve the dollar.
Okay.
That's why he's back on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so thirteen to Fran's point. We, we were trying to bring people's rates up, a dollar, which may not seem much, but I, I think it's significant for these guys from what we had as a base pay. So the people that we had hired at fifteen dollars an hour, we, we gave an extra dollar, sixteen. And Lewis, Lou's, in his position, he was hired fifteen dollars, but he also received a dollar for the certificate that he had. And so he, he wasn't at the time, or last week, we didn't know how to, how to work that with the dollar hour salary increase. I recommend that, you know, that we, we add that additional dollar to his hourly rate. So I would like to make a motion to, for Louis Kidzuega to add the additional hour, or additional dollar an hour to his salary as we did the other employees that we just hired.
I'll second that.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And last is Jake Bacaro. As I explained, when we hired him, Jake was the only one, you know, I went over hourly rates and everything. Jake was making more money at the time or, and asked if I could get closer to twenty-one or twenty dollars. I said that wasn't, wasn't possible. So we did hire him at sixteen dollars an hour. He got the, the extra money for, for CDL. So I believe he's at eighteen dollars an hour now. I think that we brought everyone else up a dollar and I think we should bring Jake up the extra dollar also. So I'll leave that to discussion. I know there was concerns before, so. Any discussion on that one?
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to bring Jake Bacaro's hourly rate up a dollar an hour as we did with the other employees that we just hired.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, very much. Old business EBA recommendation regarding posting of signs for public hearings. Anyone have a comment on that?
There's a paper that needs to be corrected in code draft, third sentence. The applicant will pick up or whatever, there's, there's, something needs to be done there. This, what we have in our package is a public hearing. This is not billed as a public hearing. We need to have a public hearing on this.
Okay.
Because it's a code change.
Okay. So we can kinda table this or what, well, I would, I'd like to talk about public, a public hearing, but, so we can, we can move this ahead. If there's any other corrections, we should, we should tell Aaron.
I like the grease pencil idea. I think that will get the most life out of the sign that way.
So if we need public hearings here, we're gonna need a public hearing for a few other things. It'd be, I think it would be good to kind of combine public hearing date, rather date for, you know, there's some signs we need to change. There's the number of people in the rec commission, bringing it from seven to five members that need to be, have a public hearing for, I believe. So, so we'll, we'll table, you know, we'll move this ahead with the public hearing. We don't have to table it.
In terms of the content of the proposal, I, I think it's very reasonable. The question, one question is, who is responsible for updating the sign? A sign is supposed to be marked with all boards that have scheduled hearings, and as it turns out, uh, the first board that goes before may say, we're gonna have a public hearing, so the grease pen, one. And then a week later, the Z B, CBA may say, oh, we're gonna have a public hearing too. So that one needs to be checked. So, um, what, what this doesn't say is who is responsible for keeping the sign updated.
Okay. Do you want to run that by Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree. Okay. So we'll move this ahead. Uh, we'll discuss the, the public hearings, or what we, what we need to do and move that ahead. Next, authorize the mayor to sign the PBA contract. This is, um, it's like a memory now. A long time ago, it seems. I thought this was completed over, uh, I think Marie went over with a fine Tuesday.
With Judith or whomever it was, yes.
And it only cost us thirty million dollars, but, uh, but it's all straight now. Anyway, thank you for going through that all and, and going back, uh, I appreciate that. So, somebody want to make a motion on this?
I make a motion to authorize Mayor Randy to sign the PBA contract.
I'll second it.
Thank you for that.
Any discussion?
I have a question on, uh, just as an aside, um, Stephen Lynn and I have not seen this until today.
Okay, would you like to wait?
I, I had time to read it, but I don't know if Stephen Lynn did or not. But I just have one question. I, on page ten, there's something, it says effective May first, twenty fourteen. Is I correct?
Um, uh, what is it referring to?
Uh, an employee fails to submit availability. This is, this is in two of his duty. I, you know, I asked, when I saw this on the agenda, I asked Jeff for a copy of this because I hadn't seen it.
Much of what is in here is from the old PBA contract, and my remembrance was in conversations with Judith or whoever that other woman was, they don't want to go back and, and re-discuss that.
Mm-hmm.
And so this was something that occurred, uh, four plus years ago now.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, um, they would prefer to leave it in. That, that was my remembrance,
Okay.
with some of the dates that looked unusual in their plan.
I, I sort of was getting that impression, and, uh, and I guess the other, the other question I had, there was a section on light duty assignments, and I didn't think we had any light duty to give. So I don't know how that section works, if that's just a section that stays there.
I haven't got over the whole, the contract looking at that, but we do not have light duty, uh, um, positions upstairs, uh, full-time. So if, if you cannot go out on the street and perform any duties, then, then you can't just come in and do admin work right now, it's not that.
Okay, I will, so can we?
Again, it's possible that that's a sort of a standard clause in a standard PBA contract. And from what Larry says, although a light duty assignment might be warranted, we don't have any. So we won't be able to, to handle that.
I think that falls under the state contract. If, if your, your, your department has a certain amount of employees, that there need to be a light duty status. If there was full-time employees, or somebody had the hours of a full-time employee, I think that's where that falls in. So I think it is a general, uh, thing, and it kind of has to be in the contract, even though it doesn't, uh, fall under what, you know, we have in the village.
Okay.
Would you like another week to look at that?
I've, I've had time to look at it. It's up to Steve and Lynn, because they haven't had time.
I just cut it out of my mailbox, yeah.
Yeah, I just got it to, um, I'd like to look it over before we vote on it, but I also don't want to, okay, hang you guys up either.
We'll reschedule for the next meeting.
Okay.
And I apologize, I thought we had circular copies of that.
I thought it was at one point, no, but then again, we didn't get the final with the changes months later.
We'll table it.
Okay, uh, approval of bills?
Um, I move to approve batch number forty-eight sixty-five for ten thousand dollars, ten thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and twelve cents.
I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, excuse me, could you read the, uh, the batch number and the dollar amount again, Lynn?
Ah, come on.
Batch forty-eight sixty-five.
Okay.
For ten thousand three hundred and sixty-three and twelve cents.
Three sixty-three.
Three six three. One zero three six three five one two.
No, sorry.
You have to tell me twice.
No, we-
Okay.
Because I wrote six sixty-three the first time around, so I apologize.
So did I the first time.
Uh, any public comment? No? Okay. One last, uh, the one last thing is, um, well, we have to get the parking committee going again over, well, we can start it after holidays or whatever, but that's something I'd like to think about. If we can kind of, the things that we need to do a public hearing for, if we can kind of put those together, do you think it's possible to have them at, like, one night maybe, or?
What I'm aware of is-
Can you do that?
Yeah, you, well, you have to have a public hearing on each.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have-
But they don't have to be, they could be on the same day.
Oh, yes.
Right.
So we have the ZBA proposal, we have the rec commission, what other streets?
I think there's signs, uh, traffic signs that, uh, I think the signs actually, a few signs would have to be.
Traffic signs, okay. So some work will be necessary.
I can, uh, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
One-way streets.
What else? I'm sorry.
She's got, she's on her one-way street.
I'm on my one-way street. I'm behind you. A couple of streets in the village that really need to, you need one-way or have no parking or something on it.
Well, we need to, we need to get, I don't know if we should do it after the holidays, the ones on that.
Yeah, probably in January.
Start, start the parking, maybe see if we can finalize some stuff there.
Yeah, I mean, that gets far from a public hearing.
Cedar, not Cedar, which is-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Cedar Street.
Okay, so, um, if, if you can get me the traffic sign.
Parking lot, it cannot be a two-way street.
Okay, I'll talk to Larry over a few, there's a couple that I was thinking we should.
Okay.
Yeah, when you get out there, it's going slow down.
Should we email?
Barely cut.
And we'll put it together? Okay. Um, but yeah, there's no reason why we can't do that all, uh, three in one, one night, and we can do it toward the end of the month maybe.
Okay. Yeah. One, one sign that I was thinking of, and I'll float this one, is to have a five-minute biz, uh, business parking out front where it's, where it's the police, where we park there, but just between nine o'clock and four, something like that. So it doesn't interfere with the police, like, uh, you know, when they change shifts or whatever.
That's the only major issue I have is changing shifts, because the way that, the way we kind of pull in and swap guys out, and sometimes we need to take an automatic weapon out of a vehicle. I want, you gotta have to walk all across the street with an automatic weapon out in his hand, might bring along to the door. That's the only thing, so that would be probably, shift changes like eight o'clock in the morning, and it'd be like three, three, quarter to four, uh, in the afternoon. That would be the only way to drive.
Or maybe just nine to three or something in the middle, because people don't have a place to, you know, park to pay their water bills, which a lot of people still pay by, uh, anything.
So, um-
It could be like where we have the two signs right out front, the closest one to the, to the crosswalk. We could just have, uh, you know, five-minute parking, village business only between the hours of-
Why don't you run a little park there?
A park across the street, uh, you know, it's no big deal for me. We could actually put something across the street for mayor or police or something too.
Well, if you rode your bike, Seth used to have his bike parking on there.
Yeah, I'm not riding, I'm not riding.
He was a pedal bike.
Monday through Friday, I think.
Yes.
Monday through Friday.
Yeah. Now, the, the U-turn signs, do we need to do something with those?
Yes.
And can we do something with those? Can we legally?
I believe so.
But they don't, they isn't-
I thought that that was not in the code, but it isn't the code. The no-U-turn isn't the code. So what, so what's the issue?
Yeah, the issue are the signs are not DOT approved. In New York State law, you have, whatever signs you put in, it has to be DOT approved.
It has to say it on the-
It has to actually say it on the signs.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I knew that from the-
That, that's where that comes down.
So we got them cheap sometime, or someplace.
Right. Um, but there, there's also other ways, you know, now that we have the, the W O line painted, that got, uh, we can actually instead of illegal U-turn, if they cross a double, a solid W O line, it's, it's, that's an illegal, it's an illegal act.
So because, because the signs are not DOT approved, even though the code says you can't make a U-turn on the main street, we can't ticket them?
Uh, we can, we can ticket them, but it may be an issue going for, going forward.
It's like our fifteen mile an hour or-
Yes, exactly.
I thought that, I, I don't understand why the yellow line is, is an issue with this.
Before, there wasn't a yellow line, so if people did a U-turn, you couldn't say they crossed the yellow line, because you couldn't see what-
It was an excuse that, oh, I didn't do, uh, that's a W line, I didn't know, I couldn't do a U-turn in the middle of the street, and I was like, no.
I, I didn't think that the definition of the U-turn, the DOT definition of the U-turn included crossing a yellow line.
Right.
I, I thought the definition of a U-turn was a three-point turn.
A three-point, or K, what they call a K-turn is the same, 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 same type of difference.
So instead of giving them a ticket for a U-turn, because that disply, you give them a ticket for crossing a double yellow line, which is an infraction also.
Or if they do it into a street though. That's usually where they do it. They do it on Stone Street or whatever.
Yeah, but there's a break, there's a break, there's a break. Right where the sign is.
Yeah, there's a break on every cross, like, if you're gonna make a left-hand turn on a rock, there's a break in the W O line there.
Yeah. But then if they end up doing a U-
To protect, if they do the K-turn, then, you know, there's, there's other things we can, we can look at.
There's other rules.
Rules of law, believe me, there's a new one.
Well, wait a minute. If, if you ticket them for crossing the double yellow line, wouldn't it be inconsistent to not ticket somebody going around somebody who's parked?
You can, you can actually, that, it's up to discretion with the police officer, when he does what, does do, but it, it, if you go across the W O line going around somebody looking to park, of course it will. It's a W O line, it's not supposed to be. Unless emergency circumstances.
Or a beer truck's sitting there, parked in the middle of the street.
Yeah, or delivery truck.
Monday through Friday deliveries of the eighteen-wheelers that are out here every day, it's, it's-
How much would it cost to get DOT-approved no-U-turn signs?
I have, I-
Is that, is that possible to do?
Probably, I'd have to look at, I would probably have to reach out to, uh, Carl, uh, Shadow, or the county, and see what, what they do, and what, you know, they, they go, what they have to get to go through those.
Because it just seems like there's a lot of, a lot of wiggle room on our main street about the legality or lack thereof of crossing the double yellow line, and it's up to the discretion which would, of the police officer, which could lead to problems, I don't know, packing the fort, you know, people objecting to it. If we just had DOT-approved no-U-turn signs, then we can ticket somebody for making a U-turn sign, right?
Correct, but there are other laws that you can, other vehicle laws that you can get them for doing illegal U-turn, even though it's, it's not a specific for the sign itself. If they came with the court and fought the sign, they said, listen, it's not a DOT-approved sign, you probably did, no, be dismissed. But again, if you get them on a K-turn and crossing a W O line, it's, again, it's all at the discretion of, of police officers, and the incident that involves it. I don't want to, you know, have all mainstream all jammed up, because they're getting a delivery, you know, up the road, the eighteen-wheeler, and nobody go across a yellow, W O line. That's why, I don't know. There's always wiggle room in that.
Well, whatever we have to do to enforce that, because I had a really scary, I mean, I related it to you, I had a really scary-
I have this all the time, you have this.
I see it every-
I know. So I'd just like to see it.
Yep.
You guys empower to enforce it, however we have to.
Yes, it's a bunch of signs, I'd like, I'd like to, you know, definitely put up some that's clear, so I can say, hey, you have no excuses for what you're getting some for.
The street there, so I'm waiting for them.
One other one that I had received a letter from was a person, a resident on Railroad Avenue, um, saying that buses are, and also trying to try and go up the street, or make, coming down Depot Square, and trying to actually go up there and getting stuck, or tearing down the lines going across the road.
That's an ongoing incident for a number of years. Uh, it's usually the, the local, uh, it's usually when they deliver to, uh, the depot, and it's a new truck driver. Most of the truck drivers know they do the turn there, if that's how you do their U-turns, they kind of go up, back up, and then go back up main. Uh, when you do have a, a guy that's not experienced or not been in the area, they try to go up that road, they take down the low, low hanging lines that belong to Central Hudson. I've mentioned to them on numerous occasions on having that pole replaced, and this, and the actual wires either lifted, they know about it, they've been contacted. It's just waiting on them.
Typically, the lower lines are not Central Hudson's, they're, they're cable vision and a lot of-
Oh, most of the time it's actually a telephone company, which is one that's been hanging outside here for approximately a year and a half that I've had an issue with.
Chestnut Street is, it's tied around the signs, you know.
So they are extremely, the telephone people are extremely slow on doing any type of repairs to any poles whatsoever, because they all share the same poles, so they all go like this. So if it's a line, it's, it's physically be a line that you need to do a complaint on, especially if it's, and you don't know, I wouldn't know, if looking at, is it cable line, is it Central Hudson line, is it, you know, telephone line, is it an incident line? That, that's where it all comes, that's the whole thing comes down to, it's so confusing.
Larry, we also need to put up additional do-not-enter signs.
Correct.
For the one-way streets, um-
It has to be two, two on, 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 one on one, one on one corner, one on the other.
Yeah, or a violation on a, a number of the one-way streets.
On different streets or there.
No, um, uh, Campbell Avenue.
The name was Campbell, and everybody likes to go down, likes to make the less, thinks they can keep going down that way. That's what the name was.
I'm not sure about Church. I wonder how there are two signs on Church.
I don't think so. I think there's just one.
We just need to take care of that.
Well, if there's a recommendation for the one, uh, for something down on Depot, as far as not entering or delivering or something, should we put something there? Would something be helpful there? There's nothing now.
Yeah, there's absolutely nothing now, but it's really, because, because that's still a two-way street down there on Railroad, so they can actually go up that way. So there's really nothing you can-
Can there be something with no trucks or no something?
You can do that, yeah. Uh, definitely, no trucks over, over certain weight, you can do that, uh, trucks, certain length, you can do that also. Just telling, even the deep, just letting the depot know, too, hey, listen, you got a delivery coming in, you know, you gotta have a guy out there or go out there, just tell them they can't, you know, we do that with food now. Uh, Grand Union, for those that live here, that they come down that side, that sometimes they come down that sidewalk with the new drivers, and they have multiple signs all over the place, because we had an issue with one of the people on there, that a new driver was going, constantly going down the one-way and getting stuck, and that has been, uh, fixed.
What they've been doing more recently is going straight up Furnace.
That's what I'm saying, down Furnace. I said cable, I meant to say Furnace.
They go straight down Furnace in the wrong.
Haven't gotten any complaints in a long time about that, because there's somebody that lives on that, we used to call them constantly.
Recently, yeah, in October a couple of times.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's, you, you're just so amazed you see a tractor-trailer coming down.
Yep.
I'm not gonna run out and try to stop them.
No, I hear you, I hear you.
Okay, we'll work on the other signs. I'll talk to you, we'll, we'll meet up and go over some of the signs, and then we'll get whatever we can. If anyone thinks of something else, we need a public hearing or, uh, do we need any, if we want to put dog signs or something down at the park, do we need to do anything?
I don't think we have anything in the code right now that would require it to be changed. You might want to edit the code. Um, and that would require a public hearing.
Okay.
It's when we change the code that we need to make-
All right, I'll talk to you about it, I guess. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Uh, Central Hudson, I want to meet with them.